I think calls, special city council meeting to order. Please rise and join together in our pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Heffernan. Councilmember Mayor Cruz- Alves?
Here.
And Mayor King?
Here.
Nice job.
Did it so fast I forgot to turn on my microphone here.
First of all, we like to wish everybody, I hope everybody had a great Christmas and moving into the new year soon, and with that we will go to item four under for the urgency ordinance.
This is Mr. Mayor Eric Sherwin, Director of Local Analyst, Community Development Director of Local Analyst. Good evening. In 2019, there were several bills that have passed at the state level that all related to accessory dwelling units, I might refer to those as ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs. So with the governor signing these bills into law in October.
The bill numbers?
I'll get to those, but they were, yeah, so AB 68, AB 881, and then there was also SB 13, and AB 670. So with these being signed into law in October, cities had a short amount of time to draft an ordinance to be put on the books that would be in compliance with these new laws before they go into effect come January 1st, 2020. That's the reason why we have an urgency ordinance before the city council this evening. In the future, we will bring back a fully public hearing notice before the planning commission and the city council as we would in a normal situation, but because the timing is of the essence, that's why we're having a special meeting to get this adopted hopefully before the end of the year. These new laws have further restricted local control over ADUs and JADUs. Previously, cities were not required to even allow junior accessory dwelling units. JADUs are units that are inside of an existing house without normally an expansion or addition, just simply reconfiguring the living space of an existing home to have a separate unit. They have to have their own kitchen, but they are allowed to share bathroom facilities with the primary structure. They are also typically an 500 square feet in size. That's a conversion of living space. It would not be a converted attached garage that would not be considered a JADU. There's really only one reason to really differentiate between JADUs and the ADUs is that JADUs are allowed to be, or they are required to be owner occupied, or the owner has to be on the property, they're in the primary structure or in the JADU, whereas the city has for the next five years at least cannot require traditionally ADUs from being owner occupied. But junior ADUs are required to have that part in there. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the specific differences and new restrictions or what has to be allowed now under these new laws. But it's important to note that there's still some disagreement even amongst the city attorneys across the region about, because there's conflicting language in these four different bills that don't, and there's some areas where it doesn't provide clear direction to what was the intention of the rule. So it's widely expected that there will be a cleanup bill that will be presented to try to resolve these issues in the future. If that seems to be moving forward at a faster pace, we probably would wait on bringing the ordinance back to you during the public review process until such a bill was passed so we can ensure that our final ordinance is accurate and complies with state law at that time. But in the meantime, one of the reasons why at the December 16th city council meeting staff asked that we postpone the discussion on this item in that the city received a letter from an attorney from a nonprofit group which challenged some of the rules that we were proposed to put before you on that ordinance. Since then, we've gone back and looked at those specific concerns raised. We've also shared our ordinance with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the state level to make sure that they saw that our ordinance was in compliance with what they understood the rules to say. And in this, as such, we have made some modifications to that ordinance. That's why we provided you with the track change version of it in your report so you can see what's changed since the ordinance that was presented or was ready to be presented at the December 16th council meeting. So some of these proposed changes, they might not fully address all the concerns raised in the letter from the attorney for the nonprofit group. But as I said before, there's disagreement even what was intended with some of the bills. So while somebody could have an opinion on one item or one way that it's supposed to be worded, we might have a different opinion on that. And I'm going to talk about two specific things that we're asking the city council to basically agree with in terms of where we as staff believe is the right decisions to go forward on this ordinance. So AB 68, that's the primary one that deals with junior accessory dwelling units. Again, those are units inside of an existing home that are less than 500 square feet and they may share bathroom facilities.
To have their own kitchen.
But they do have, required to have their own kitchen. That could be a very small kitchen. It's not really defined on what it has to entail, but they have to have their own kitchen facilities as part of the JADU. And again, this, we previously did not allow for JADUs, but now with this new law change, they are required to be, have to be allowed in every city in the state of California. We are allowed to collect application fees and processing fees and building permit fees for these types of projects when they are to be underdone. There are limitations however on the impact fees that a city can collect for adding a new residential unit. Prior to this, we would have fully, in our fee schedule, we have some reduced rate fees for ADUs, but they are fully, if they have a new water connection, they have to pay a water connection fee. They have to pay a reduced amount to a parks fee, development fee. The new laws say that if you build a unit under 750 square feet, we are not allowed to collect those fees any longer, which was something that we had done before. So in the next fee schedule come May or when the budget's presented and the fee schedule's adopted, we will outline those fees that we are allowed to charge for, and we'll be specific about what is not required based on the size of the units. The other thing that JADUs is important that it is allowed on a property with a single family home, but also a detached or attached accessory dwelling unit is also allowed in that case. So in theory, a person that has a single family home today would be able to build two additional units no matter what the zone is. These JADUs and ADUs are required to be allowed, are allowed in all residential zones and mixed use zones as well. Multi-family properties are allowed to have ADUs and JADUs as well.
I just want to clarify, I'm sorry. The JADU is only in the single family residential zone?
Correct, yes, I'm sorry. But ADUs are allowed in multi-family residential zones as well. And I talked about the fact that we cannot apply the five year, or owner occupied for ADUs for at least the next five years. That was also specifically worded or in the bills, whereas previously for all accessory dwelling units, that was a requirement under our current code.
But we cannot?
We cannot for ADUs.
Up to 2025?
Yes, at least. They might extend that. AB 881 is the one that specifically made it applicable into all residential zones in that it gives us a shot clock of 60 days in which we have to approve such ADUs through the review process. There is very limited design review that the city is allowed to have also with ADUs. So the grounds on which ADUs may be denied are limited to water, sewer, traffic flow, and public safety. Previously, the city prohibited settee units or ADUs in our hillside development overlay zone, which is basically the area north of baseline and east of Wheeler, in the city of Laverne. Before you, on the dance, is a map of the city. And I want to briefly go over this map with you to show you what the different colors mean. But the ordinance that was proposed on the 16th also was going to prohibit the ADUs and JADUs in the very high fire severity zone, which on this map is the red is the area. Most of the hillside development overlay zone and this very high fire severity zone overlap in the same properties. So most, most properties, all the red area is in both of those two different districts. The predominant difference is that the HDOZ covers the area north of baseline and east of Wheeler, that intersection, which is yellow on this map, in the middle of the map. That area is not in the very high fire severity zone, but it is in the HDOZ. Whereas the orange colors, as is on the hill down the southern portion of the city, Putting Stone Hill near Brackett Airport, that yellow circle area on the bottom of the map, is also HDOZ, excuse me, but not in the very high fire severity zones. There's two neighborhoods that are in the very high fire severity zones but not in the HDOZ, and that's the neighborhood to the west side of Wheeler at Golden Hills. That's kind of orange, the top left of the map, adjacent to red. And then between baseline and the freeway, east of White Avenue, or I'm sorry, Fruit Street, that area over there is in the very high fire severity zone, that was, is not part of the HDOZ. The reason why I'm telling, explaining this to you is one of the challenges that was presented in the letter to us challenged some of our reasoning for not allowing them in the, in the HDOZ. The hillside development overlay zone was predominantly designated to controlled development in our hillsides, whereas the very high fire severity zone is because of absolute, you know, concerns about this public safety for fire hazards. We feel, and our city attorney's office feels, that we can defend the prohibition of these, of ADUs and JADUs in the very high fire severity zone. We have good reasons for that that are outlined in the ordinance, but that in the hillside development overlay zone, we might not have as good of an argument. So that's why what's being proposed or what we're asking the council today to decide to, we're just going to now prohibit them in the very high fire severity zone, which would be the red area and the two orange neighborhoods, and then, which would mean that the neighborhood in Rancho Laverne basically would now no longer prohibit ADUs, whereas they have historically in our city as well.
Is that that orange here?
That's the yellow area in the middle.
Okay.
So that's one, that's one of the two things that I've mentioned that we're asking for the council to basically go with us. At this time, staff is proposing that we just prohibit these in the very high fire severity zone because we feel that we can defend that if challenged legally.
Eric, that's also Putting Stone Hill as well.
Putting Stone Hill would not, would no longer be prohibited.
So Rancho Laverne and Putting Stone Hill would be the two areas that would be subject to.
So Eric, when you ask, when you say challenged by the state?
Most likely, no, we don't expect, if this ordinance is passed, we send it back to the state for them to basically sign off on or give us feedback that they feel that our ordinance is lacking somehow. No, legally challenged by an attorney or some homeowners group such as the one that sent us the letter. Because that was a nonprofit group, but the letter came from their attorney. So that's, that's one of the two issues. The second one comes to, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the, the things that we can require for these ADUs predominantly, and then the second issue that we're asking the council to verify. One of the changes in the law now no longer allows us to have a minimum size lot that ADUs can be on, so existing properties of any size can have an ADU on. There's, basically the state said you could set some development standards up if you like. However, at the end of the day, the city has to allow for up to an 800 square foot, 16 foot in height ADU that has a four foot setbacks to the side and the rear. There was no mention about front yard setback. There is no direction that way. So our interpretation on that is that the front yard setback of the zones of what they are today would continue to apply to ADU. Previously, we had that ADUs must be behind the rear property, the rear portion of the primary structure, and that was challenged in the letter. And it is possible that on a corner lot or other, or another larger site, that maybe there would be room to put an ADU next to the side of the house and not necessarily behind it. Or if a house was setback far enough, there might be room to put an ADU in the front between the house and the front property line, or the front property setback. We are interpreting at this time that we can continue to require a front yard setback as what the zone allows for. And so the way that the ordinance now reads is that an ADU has to be behind the front setback line of the property in whichever zone is located. Predominantly, that's 25 feet back from the front property in most, most areas. But this, this other exception says you can have different size requirements and setbacks and distance separation, but at the end of the day, we have to allow for up to an 800 square foot unit that's 16 feet or lower in height that has four foot setbacks or greater two sided rear property lines.
And the fire department, do they have to sign off on any of these projects?
Well, through normal review process, they do have an opportunity to review them. They're allowed to require fire sprinklers and they can't say no to them through this process. We have to allow that at a minimum, except for if we're making the case that in the very high fire severity zones that we shouldn't have additional housing units in that area. And that's what the case that we're trying to, that we're proposing.
I understand that. I just, what I'm suggesting is that at some juncture with density, if people decide to do this, how are we going to get equipment in to suppress fire?
Well, we still have side yard setbacks, but yes, I mean, it will increase density in neighborhoods, and the state's been very clear that we don't get to control that any longer.
Well, Eric, going back to what he asked, did you say that with these new dwellings that we will not require that these, they have to have fire sprinklers?
We cannot require them to have fires.
Even though we made an ordinance that said all new developments in Laverne?
So if, if the primary structure already has fire sprinklers, then we can require them for the new ADU. But most of the places where we see these homes being proposed is in old town, and almost all of those homes are older that don't have fire sprinklers. So even for new residential units, the, the state law is very clear, we cannot require fire sprinklers for them, which seems kind of contrary to the other issues that we've been having in California, wildfires and housing protections, but that's how it's specifically written. The fire, the fire department would love to require that every new of all these would have fire sprinkler systems. But this has been the case actually on the previous ordinance too. We, that's, this has been in place for a couple of years now where we haven't been able to require fire sprinkler systems on ADUs. So previously, we also had a limit on the size of the units, up to a maximum of 50% of the square footage of the primary house. However, we can, we've been challenged on that requirement in the letter because the state also says you could set maximum sizes for a single bedroom or a studio apartment of 850 square feet, and anything more than that, a maximum size of 1,200. You also have to have a minimum size that can allow for efficiency unit, which today is like 150 square feet. So you can't say that it has to be a minimum other than the efficiency unit size, which is 150, which is basically, there's no minimum size.
So you're saying the storage shed that has some plumbing and some hot plate could suffice?
So it still has to meet the building codes, but an existing shed structure could be retrofitted or torn down and rebuilt in that same space, is that same size, and get proper permits to have electrical and plumbing and, you know, sewer, sewer systems and be allowed to be in that size, yes. As long as it wasn't greater than 150 square feet. So because of the challenge and because at, at the end of the day, we felt that it'd probably be simpler to simply allow for the maximum sizes as the state allows for either studio or one bedroom to be up to 850 square feet, two bedroom to be 1,200. Fact of the matter is, most of the times that when people come to us that want to build these type of units, they typically are under the 850 square feet, and so even if they're two bedroom, they're usually not that big. And so that's something that we feel will be, it's, it will be compliant with state code, and it's a little bit more lenient than what we previously allowed for, but we know that will be, we can defend that decision. And so it's, it's consistent with state with the new bills. People are allowed to convert their garages to living space, and we cannot require new parking with those conversions.
Above the garage?
They could, so above or the garage itself is what I was referring to. If there's permitted space above an existing garage, they can convert that to living space. However, if it's just a single story garage, then they want to add a second story to that garage structure. We still have limitations that it can't be taller than the primary, the primary structure in there in terms of the height limitations that we feel that we can continue to require just as we have for the last, you know, 10, 15 years actually. So if it's detached, if it's attached to the primary structure, an accessory dwelling unit can be two stories in height. But the more, I think, important point of the garage conversion is that we, we previously would have required another garage to be built if they were to do that, and, but we cannot do that any longer. So if somebody has a garage in the back of their property, they can convert that with permits to living space and allow that for it to be an ADU. And no matter what size it is, even if it's over the maximum allowable, because that was once a permitted structure. If it was an illegal structure, then it wouldn't matter. But if we ever permitted it for any other reason, for a workshop, a garage, there was permits on and that was a legal structure, no matter where it's placed in the property, the setbacks, the size of it, the height of it cannot be changed, that they can be converted to an ADU.
Is there an occupancy number that people are allowed to live in a space like that?
We don't set occupancy levels for homes. That's, that's true for a normal house or an ADU.
Per state law, the efficiency unit of 150 square feet allows two people.
And once again, at the end of the day, we have to allow for under new construction, 800 square feet to 16 feet in height with four foot setbacks and adhering to the front yard setback. Again, that's the second thing that we're asking the council to confirm that we want to continue to do. So even recognizing that it's possible that we could be challenged on that interpretation, but we feel that other, other cities are doing the same that we are that we're proposing to do in that, and continue to require the front yard setback for ADUs. The other bills are not as entailed in terms of how much they regulate these, but they are of the ones that I mentioned before. SB 13 deals specifically with the health and safety code, which says that if we find there's some kind of violation on a property, we notify the property owner on an ADU that unless it's directly related to health and safety concerns, so if they did something legal addition or something to it, but it wasn't a health and safety immediate concern, that that homeowner now has five years to fix the problem. We cannot, we have to allow them five years to fix it instead of immediately requiring compliance. AB 670 was specific, and this one's, I think, pretty important in that it now prohibits CCNRs for homeowners associations from prohibiting ADUs, which most of them do, and that's why most of our residential neighborhoods that are in HOAs, the people would not even be allowed to ask for them because their own CCR restricted it further than what the city could do. Well, this law changed that and said, no, you're not, CCRs cannot prohibit ADUs basically recently.
And that was going to be my question. I had written down for all the HOAs in our city, that wouldn't be affected? So they don't supersede? Oh. So the rules, the HOA's CCNRs or rules and regulations do not supersede?
No.
The state law?
The state law supersedes the CCNRs.
So these could go into HOAs?
Every residential neighborhood.
As long as they weren't in the overlay.
Right, so that's, most of our homeowners associations are in the very high fire severity zone, so that, they would still be prohibited there. But we do have several other newer projects just behind me at the Overland Walk and over baseline that are not in those things where they could be junior ADUs or ADUs added to those properties regardless of what the CCNR say.
Even though, I'm looking at Putting Stone too, that's another one.
That would be allowed.
Because, you know, with CCNRs, you, we typically have a time span of what you can, you have to get something done. They get a violation for, say, painting that, you know, your trim needs to be painted, you have six months to do, so we can no longer?
You cannot stop a resident from putting a separate living unit on their property.
Wow.
So that's one I think hasn't got a lot of press or people aren't really talking about, but, but the state saw that, you know, that almost every CCNR is in single family residence. And so with that, staff is recommending, staff is here to answer questions as city attorneys as well, but we are recommending that the city council adopt urgency here within number 1089 this evening, and understanding that this will come back at a future meeting after it's gone through the planning commission and public noticing process, and hopefully once we get some more confirmation that our interpretation of these rules is consistent or that we fix it to make sure that we're consistent with state law.
Any questions?
I have a hundred questions.
I, okay, then I, I'll start.
I spoke with Bob about this, several issues, and the attorney. My primary concern, of course, is safety. Fire being the primary issue here, but also the overtaxing of our, our water and sewer systems, as well as police calls to areas that are going to double in density if people take advantage of this. My biggest fear, of course, is developers coming in and finding ways around our ordinances in order to develop properties to the utmost. I'm dismayed at Sacramento's lack of understanding about local control and about having a place like the city of Laverne available to our residents to enjoy, and now because of improper management of resources, we have a homeless situation in Los Angeles and San Francisco that seems to have dictated by, were dictated to our legislators that all of us must suffer in order to bring this problem to an end. So I don't have anything more to say about this issue.
I have a question. In the staff report, there is a statement that says there are four categories of accessory dwelling units that must be approved regardless of any provisions for an ADU, and one of them I don't understand. That's the center bullet. That's, would you go over that?
Sure. So basically, think of an apartment complex.
Yeah.
And they have typically, I'm just saying, across the street, carports and garages outline the perimeter of the site, and they have the residential buildings in the middle. This would allow for multifamily uses to convert those garage spaces into new living units, up to 25% of the number of housing units they currently have. They can, without the requirement for replacement parking as well. So in theory, those perimeter garage carport structures, if you had 200 apartment unit complexes, 50 of those could be converted to new living spaces that they could rent out.
And, and that expansion would not further require any additional parking?
Correct.
Or require them to replace the parking that they lost?
Correct.
That was the point that you were making earlier. Thank you.
That language is just verbatim state law.
Right.
We can try to rewrite that.
I have one, I have another question. This is on, in the staff report, I think it's the second page, all the way to the bottom there. And that is that ADUs must be allowed in all residential areas. However, in certain circumstances, they also may be, also required to be located in mixed use zones. Can you give us an example of what a mixed use zone in the neighborhood might be?
Well, I know, you know, a mixed use project is a good example, is the Hudson project on the Boulevard where we have commercial, residential on the same property. I, I don't recall the specifics in the law. I'm looking at our city attorney to see.
You, when we listed the zones, we included as the last one, the CPD commercial, professional mixed development where residential's been allowed use.
So some properties, they, they might be commercial today, but where residential's allowed use, for the Boulevard, we allow residential development there. So if there's a residence, but doesn't residential have to be on a property today for it to be allowed for an ADU? You couldn't put an ADU, for example, in a shopping center?
No, no.
Even though residential, it has to be developed with residential. So Hudson is another project that's a multifamily. It's commercially zoned, but it has residential, and they have those detached perimeter garages, they even have attached garages, and those spaces could be converted to 25% And those spaces could be converted, twenty-five percent of those units could be converted to living spaces that they chose to, they chose to use.
And under the CPD zone, residential is one of your allowed uses there?
But we don't have any residential projects in the CPD zone, so that doesn't, that wouldn't apply in that case today.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
I do. Yes, um, okay, so I'm even looking at this map here. Now, the county area that we basically consider part of, or is brass, or it's up there high, our fire services take care of on the place. Now, would that be a part of this decision?
No, because it's, it's, it's in the county. So whatever the county adopts as their ordinance is what will apply to the residents that live in those unincorporated areas that have an urban address but are controlled by the county of Los Angeles. So this ordinance has no impact on those. But again, the state law basically says that all residential neighborhoods have to allow for ADUs, including these unincorporated areas. The county doesn't get special rules that we don't get. So they, I would expect will be adopting a very similar ordinance to what we are, um, maybe even more lenient. But, uh, but definitely people that live in Rossi Lane or any other unincorporated areas would be able to get an ADU permit, but through the county of Los Angeles and not through the city.
Um, when I was reading over this, I, when I got out of this at first thinking, well, we're really talking about like a grandmother's flat behind the house, somebody building, something like that. But technically, they could rent this out to anybody, couldn't they?
Yes.
It's open?
Yes.
Wow.
And they don't have to live there. I have, uh, one more question, Eric. Four-foot setback in the rear, four-foot setback on the sides, if it's, if it's an additional unit, is, what's the space requirement between the front unit and the back unit?
So again, our code requires a ten-foot separation for a detached structure.
Right.
But if you build it, if you want to build an eight-hundred-square-foot unit that's sixteen feet in tall or four feet, at least to the property lines, we cannot require a distance requirement any longer. They can build it up to the house, they can build it two feet away from the house. The only other thing that's going to apply at that point is what's in the building code. So again, so we, we have this ten-foot separation, we have design, kind of some design toss in the ordinance. But at the end of the day, everybody has the inherent right to that eight-hundred-square-foot, sixteen-foot-tall, four-foot setback unit, and nothing else can apply. We have outdoor living space where we require, that does not apply to that eight-hundred-square-foot unit.
It's common.
That's, that's the bare minimum, if you want to think of it that way.
And, and that's one of the cleanup things that we're going to be looking at because they, they give you the eight-hundred-square-feet minimum, um, where you can provide the development standards. So theoretically, you should be able to say you can put ten feet behind the building, so you have to put ten feet between the building. But then they have that mandatory approval section that was outlined in the staff report that says, no matter what, you have to approve eight-hundred square feet without any limitation. Which is it? Can we put the development standards or can we not? So we'd like to see cleanup legislation. Instead of assuming you can meet the development standards, you have to. Um, but this is what Eric was pointing out, that as city attorneys group, we're just kind of at a loss what they really have to do.
How unusual. Okay, anything, any other questions here?
Yes, um, so can you take us into the area in the ordinance where we're carving out the higher, high-fire area as being excluded from ADUs? And I want to understand why we can't apply that to the, the hill development overlay zone.
Page five is where that language is, under C, in the start of the middle of page five of the ordinance. Uh, and then we, we point out under that C section, uh, six different arguments about, um, the reasons why, and, and these came from the fire marshal and a memo that was attached to your report as well.
Right, right.
About what they're raised concerns. Some of these things have been challenged in that letter from the attorney. One, for example, is, uh, you know, the concern of having a lot of people parking on the street now because we're taking away garages and, and there's nowhere else to park and you're adding more people, right? But the, I, the argument is, if the street's a lot wide enough to allow on-street parking today, it doesn't really matter if there's one car or five cars because the street is designed to be able to accommodate on-street parking. Um, you know, in terms of egress and especially in the case of an emergency. That's, you know, probably what the fire department was, was looking at in terms of in a natural disaster, whether it be an earthquake or a hillside fire, how do we get people out of, from the area of North Laverne? And having the main two roads that serve North Laverne is a valid argument for why the very high-fire severity zone should be prohibited. Now, the HDOZ is, wasn't created because of the fire concerns. It was more of an aesthetic standpoint on where hills side. So that's why the arguments for that area is a little bit different. So of these, they didn't come out on your copies, I apologize. At least I highlighted in yellow the areas that we, that talked about this for this discussion specifically. Um, at the top of page six.
The language is bracketed.
Yeah.
You can see those little brackets.
Okay, so, and, and I think that might be enough for me right now. Uh, because, so let me just go through my understanding. So basically, section C, if I ignore what's bracketed where it talks about the, or in the hillside development overlay zone, we're saying that these six arguments underneath C are the reasons why the high fire is going to be excluded from having ADUs? Or, or rather, ADUs can't be put into that area?
We, if you eliminate the hillside development overlay zone, we're also, would take out number four, which relates to the on-street parking that Eric was talking about.
And number six.
Yes, number six. Um, and then the reference in number five to hillside development overlay zone. These weren't just the arguments made by the nonprofit when I had, um, several discussions with HCD. And he said, well, if your sewers are at capacity, does that mean you don't approve any more additions in those zones? Are you, you know, putting moratorium on anything like that? Or what happens if a teenager gets a car? Something like that. So HCD was also on board, so to say, with these same types of arguments that it doesn't make sense. But the, the materials, having additional flammable materials does, and needing to get people in and out of the, the high-fire zone, um, we do feel is defensible.
Right, so if today we're deciding that we're going to say the high-fire area is clearly off-ordinance to ADUs, and we're going to leave it at that, we're going to adopt only that, we wouldn't see section four or section six in the ordinance?
And the references in the opening paragraph of C?
Of C and five.
And five to the hillside development overlay zone would also be deleted.
Right. However, if we feel as though the arguments are strong enough from a, um, because section four is about garages being converted without replacements 'cause limited parking and congestion there, and, um, that additional congestion could impact the ability for egress and ingress in emergency situations. We feel that's strong enough, we would want to leave that in. And section five, when we're talking about our wastewater system, if we do think we're at or near capacity on wastewater and more, and an uncontrollable development of additional ADUs in that area could ruin our system. I'm, I don't want to forecast, I'm just talking about perceptions right now. If we think that's a severe threat, then we would want to include section six and, and keep it for both HFA and I guess, err, the hillside development overlay. Okay.
Just real quick, a note on that, I know that Public Works, I think the council might be there, is currently working on updating their master plan for the water and sewer system for the entire city. And so that'll tell them what, you know, if it's designed capacity for that, because they, they really don't have a, a solid answer today on whether they can clearly say, we, we shouldn't be approving new additions in this port because of the water and sewer system designs. Um, and also the plan for the future development that the specific, hotel, or specific plan felt was called for for around the Gold Line Station. So they're in the middle of updating that, so that master plan will tell us what our capacities are across the city for both water and sewer. Yeah, I, I don't recall, I think that's expected to be completed, but I think it looks here.
We don't have an estimate of cost for the improvement of those systems?
No, that would be part of that study of concern.
And the suggestion of these ads came out of the conversation we had with the state and an opportunity to bolster our argument or rationale, should we be challenged, to explain why it was decided, should you choose to leave in the hillside?
Thank you for that clarification. Um, are there any other areas where there are nuances based on whether, or changes based on whether we're high-fire only or including hillside development? I don't think that, I didn't see, I just saw mostly changes to the parameters that we were trying to enforce. Um, I'm still a bit concerned about the front setback and whether we can defend that. Um, so in the cleanup down the road, I'm hoping that we can get some clarity around that in addition to the dwelling spaces.
We, right, so, you know, our prime thinking is if, of this eight-hundred-square-foot unit, they say four-foot to the side rear, they would have said four feet to the front property or some other number if they didn't want to allow for the existing setbacks to apply. So...
Well, except the ten-foot setback that we have for spacing between buildings is, has been run over, right?
It, it, it could, yes, but you're also allowed to attach, I mean, the ten-foot separation between buildings is how we define detached or detached for accessory structures, which, you know, so the primary house, for example, is a twenty-five-foot rear yard. But we allow garage to go closer, provided they, they get that, that distance requirement. But even today, somebody could put an attached ADU at the back of the house and build it two stor, sorry, two stories, and there isn't a building. They don't have to keep it ten feet separated.
Thank you. And, and property, property is reduced now?
So previously, though, our code, if it was detached, did allow these structures to be built, this is the other portion you mentioned, up to three feet to the property lines, um, previously. And we had a maximum height of fifteen feet for these accessory structures. Because it's so close to what the state laws for ADUs and our concern that somebody builds a garage today, that that might get converted, we are actually changing our ordinance that all accessory uses now have a four-foot side rear setback and can be up to sixteen feet. So that way, it's consistent with that, we don't have separate standards. So this ordinance also changes that portion of our code that has those requirements that allow them to build closer to the rear and side property lines when they are detached.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you, Eric. If there's anybody who'd like to bring their comments over this item, if you please, um, come up to the podium. There's group cards there, you don't have to do anything before, but if you would fill out a group card, a speaker card prior to leaving today, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and guests. My name is Wally Yumri. I lived here in Laverne for a few years now. Um, South Pasadena and San Marino face a mandate, we'll call it, from Sacramento, not dissimilar from what we're facing here, sorry, facing here today. It, it's just a shame that Sacramento forces small cities like the ones that we, we come to and, and want to live here in peace and quiet to have to do something that doesn't affect our neighborhoods. Um, I, I would encourage you to keep an eye on parking. Uh, in one of the areas of South Pasadena, uh, that wanted to build, uh, granny flats or, or whatever you want to call them, back then, um, the fire truck with one vehicle parked on the edge of the road couldn't access a building that was on fire. It necessitated South Pasadena to go out and find a smaller fire truck to necessitate those dwellings that needed. And, and we're entitled to fire protection. So parking, parking, and parking. If, if that's a tool that we can use, let's, let's try to use it. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else?
Um, so...
Name, name?
Robin Walker. If, um, they're able to build extra units and we don't have overnight parking, they, they don't have to build parking, where do they park their cars?
Robin, just...
Okay, that's a question. Um, I'm just, because that's what I'm thinking, like, if, I guess, I'm like a little concerned because honestly, I have two elderly people on both sides. To me, like, it's just a matter of time. They've lived there, I think, from the beginning. So, of course, I'm thinking, all those homes are going to be sold. Eventually, somebody's going to buy those. What is somebody going to put there? And I don't, because I didn't see the map, I don't know where my house falls. So, yeah, that's my question, is we don't have to change our parking ordinance?
You're, you're in that zone.
Which one, the high extreme one? I am. Okay, so having said that, um, if we, we don't, they can't force us to change our parking ordinances, right? So then we can just say, who, who's going to want to come build something if there's no place for these people to park, right?
Passes around.
I mean, that's not my question. And then, uh, what was my other question? I just lost it. Um, yeah, that was the overnight parking. And then, um, I would just, because it seems like there's so many bugs they have to work out. I don't know, I'm just throwing this out there. I would encourage to not change so much so fast, only because, uh, once you do it, I don't know if you can go back. And aren't they going to, on like, at least the hillside overlay area, some are extreme, some aren't extreme, but then if you lax that area and change it, then maybe they're gonna, how do I explain this? Like, what did we say around Laverne, is it covered in the extreme?
Got it, yep.
Is that right?
Correct.
So...
Not anymore.
Right, but I guess who, who, um, decides that? That it's extreme fire danger area?
Cal Fire, the state, the state of California.
They decide that? I don't know, I feel like you can look at that whole area again with only having two roads going up there. Um, it seems like, well, I guess you have the in-between and there. But it just seems like that area should be looked at again, that more building's been done and that would be kind of dangerous. So I don't know. I just say, it scares me, but I'm just very cautious in going right along. I guess you have to go right, right along the side of what the state of California says right now?
If, you want me to answer? Um, if we don't make these changes to have a compliant ordinance, then we can't impose any standards. Then all we are limited to is the very basics of what's in state law, which doesn't even say that your accessory structure should try and match, um, the same architectural style, paint color materials of the primary dwelling unit. So, I mean, if you Google ADUs, um, and you get like all sorts of pictures, a lot of them are very modern, drop-down the unit, that really don't fit in with a lot of what Laverne is.
Right.
And you would not be able to forbid those because state law would control. So you use absolutely all ability to regulate outside of the very minimal things if you don't go ahead now. You can go back and amend later, and hopefully, you know, if there are cleanup bills that loosen the regulations, then we can come back and we can change the regulations to, to be looser on whatever state law says. Unfortunately, HCD was supposed to have guidelines in place, uh, over about a month ago, but they've been so busy working with all the cities, trying to answer our immediate pressing questions and doing a pre-review, that they haven't been able to sit down and come up with the guideline booklet. Not that we, not that that's one hundred percent controlling. Um, there were a lot of errors in the last one.
Yeah, so I guess maybe parking, police, fire, like, all the resources, things like that, is what we can try to figure out a way to, I don't know, keep, prevent what we can, um...
Prove with you.
Yeah, okay.
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just a quick question for my own clarification. Eric Ford.
I know who you are. Probably other people don't.
Right, Eric Ford, and nice to see you all today. Uh, just for my own clarification, um, in the high-risk, high-fire zones, are garage conversions allowed there? Because that's an existing structure. I understand that the, that the junior units and the granny flats and new construction would be off limits, but what about garage conversion?
No, because that would still be creating an accessory dwelling unit. The idea is to prevent any accessory dwelling unit in the building.
The one exception to that is, as homeowners have done in the past... The, the one exception to that is, as homeowners have done in the past, if there is a three-car garage, you can't convert one of those spaces into just a room or office for the primary house, not a new unit, but a conversion. You have to maintain a two-car garage. So we do allow garage, but not for an accessory unit, just for an addition to the house essentially.
You're looking for more garage space for your cars.
Correct. And that's, and that's additional house space, but not as a unit.
Added square footage for the people in it.
Okay, great, I appreciate it. Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks, Eric.
I have a question, should I put it on the back of your address?
Um, come on, come on up here.
Paul Yumri, again, I don't know why I didn't think about this earlier, but our state representative, Chris Holden, do we know how he voted on this issue? If he voted against the issue, perhaps he can give us some guiding, uh, guidance. I, I don't know how he voted on it, but I, I'm going to go home and find out. Thank you.
I guess as he proved it.
One can only hope.
Yep. Anybody else like to address that issue? Okay, we'll bring it back up here. Any other comments? Robin, just by review.
No, my concern is what Charlie brought up earlier is what, we have to look going out to the future, what is Laverne going to look like? And that's my big concern also, is, you know, seven to ten years, fifteen years, what is Laverne going to look like? And that is something we have to take into consideration. I know what we have to do today, but these are still thoughts going through my head and I encourage everybody to be thinking about these issues as it comes back to us and goes through the planning.
Just, uh, urgent, urgent, something we're going to pass tonight. Give us a, a break in about forty-five days before we have to come up with something concrete?
No, this is not a moratorium ordinance where you have to come back within a set period of time. This is an urgency ordinance, so it stays in effect. Um, but we recommend that to make sure there's no challenge, you eventually go through the normal procedure of the public hearing through the planning commission and the city council, but there's, there's no specific timeline.
Is there a public hearing?
When it goes back through the normal procedures, there would be public hearings at the planning commission level and notice public hearings at the city council level as well. As Eric stated, in order to have something in effect in two days, um, because I understand staff's already been receiving questions about the conversions under the new law, they wanted to make sure the city was as protected as possible.
Keeping in mind, we may also want to wait until those guidelines do come out to give a clear, give us some clearer direction, that may give us some more teeth that we might be able to put in, um, once we get them from the state. So we're not going to rush through that process, but we at least are protected to this extent at this point.
And this is the first step we took?
This is the only step that you really need to do to be protected from January one.
Thank you.
So after hearing the conversation in, um, staff's report and, um, council, um, I, I think this is an important step that we take because we don't want to leave it wide open just to have state law rule what happens in our community. Granted, we don't, we don't always get to do everything we want to do, but that is the way it rolls wherever you live. Um, so I, I guess to, to, to come at it from the most conservative perspective that I can think of, I would encourage us to include the, um, hillside development overlay zone in the language of the urgent ordinance and, uh, ten eighty-nine so that we, we include in the sections C, page five, we include the, we include the bracketed or in the hillside development overlay zone. We also then include, uh, section C four in its entirety, um, in section C five. We include and hillside development overlay zone, include section C in its, or section C six in its entirety so that we have the most uniform perspective over the most of our community as we can have. So that would be my proposal for adopting, um, urgency ordinance ten eighty-nine.
Do you hold that because that can be a motion in just a minute?
There was a motion, and we can still have more conversation.
I would just, I think, Steph, we need clarification as well as to what we want to do with the front yard setback, which was the other area we were seeking direction.
Oh, include it, by all means, absolutely, I'm, I'm, yeah. Well, whatever that, whatever that setback is for each residential area, and in most cases, it's twenty-five feet. I didn't say that, that's why I was asking if there was another section. I didn't realize that, that that was, anyway, yes, that language should be included in there. My amended motion.
I thought I heard you say.
Yes, but you're welcome to talk about any you want to talk about, you're the mayor.
Well, I'm going to talk about this.
Okay.
Um, and I appreciate that motion, um, and the clarification. My, my hope is that there's some other issues that I think Laverne is, is, as we all know, it's a community that we all want to be in, it's a wonderful community. Construction costs at this point in time are through the roof. So how, how that's going to play out is somebody building an additional unit, um, and the return on the investment, because ADUs are probably looking at as a real property somewhere. So what's the return on the investment to, on that is something that I think may in, work in Laverne's favor for, um, maybe not just throw it out there. So my sense is that with this passing and with coming, and the clarification coming back and what we end up with, hopefully, we're not going to see a big change in the way Laverne sits today. So, um, but I am, I am not in favor of some of this setbacks. The, the two feet or more closer from one unit to another bothers me a lot. It just means that the quality diminishes, um, and I am, you know, we have to vote for it, but I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, so. Your motion, we need a second.
Ordinance ten eighty-nine, an urgency ordinance of the city of Laverne, amending the zoning provision for the Laverne municipal code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in accordance with state law.
Okay, we'll move to item five, public hearing. Set us, public comment, I'm just starting the public hearing. Um, public comment with regards to anything not on the agenda. Now some time set aside to do that. Again, um, if you speak, if you could please fill out a speaker card prior to or after and give it to our, Natalie, our acting city clerk. Um, thank you. Um, Natalie is a new employee in the city of Laverne. She works in the community development department. Thank you, Eric, for asking Natalie to come in tonight.
Yeah, I'm there all fast as well. I'd like to introduce our new planning intern, Gabriel Rivera, who's been with us for a couple of weeks, who's sitting in. He's been learning a lot about ADUs over these last few years as well.
Thank you for your work.
Word of fire.
So he's not running away. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, anybody would like to address the city council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, um, we will move to item six, and that is, um, our next scheduled meeting will be, um, the two, the day after, um, the holiday. We have a holiday on, uh, Ruth and King on the Monday of our scheduled meeting. So we will be meeting on the twenty-first, which is Tuesday, at six thirty. Our Monday, our first Monday, January sixth, has been canceled due to the lack of business. And so we will see everybody here on January twenty-first in Tuesday. Um, and happy, um, happy new year, everybody. Thanks for coming.